Start here at six thirty on October fourteenth at the fire station. We have forums with the beginning of the public legends. Would allegiance apply? These three public, which stands my nation, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, uh, we have an amendment to the agenda. Do you have any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public, I'd say we don't. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September twenty third, twenty twenty five?
A motion.
Any questions? Or do I have a second? Any questions? Tina, all in favor? Any opposition? Old business, I just wanted to quickly summarize our motion. Last meeting after our executive session, we had the session during the executive session and then made a motion after executive session in the back of the meeting was public. But we did not have our camera on, so tonight I just wanted to address the motion we made during that timeframe. After the, we came back into the public session, we made a motion to approve a five-year contract for the town manager. And the motion was for the first year's salary being one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars with a three percent increase for the remaining years of the contract, as well as five weeks of vacation per year. That was a motion by Deb, seconded by Rebecca and unanimously approved by the board. And that is reflected in our town meeting minutes, but we just want to address it on camera since that took place after the executive session. Alrighty, last, uh, the other thing on old business here is our continued discussion and hopefully buttoning up of the batting cage. Infield proposal from the Durham youth baseball. Jerry confirmed for us that our liability policy would cover any sort of injuries that may happen if someone was to utilize a batting cage. It's the same policy that covers the rest of the baseball field and in-town property, so that was a question for us. And so I just wanted us to button this up and decide if the select board wants to support any of the proposed quotes or if we want to support or pass at this time. So, does anyone have any feelings on the, on the topic?
I do.
Yeah?
Um, I'm in favor of supporting it. I said a lot about it since our last meeting. I'm not in favor of approving a ten thousand dollar pay out for that immediately. But I think we can come up with, if we approve, moving forward, come up with a reasonable number that would have taxpayer funded, basically. Maybe half the cost of the batting cage. I would think we would offer that once the, the group fundraises to collect the other half.
So would you say we're like a reimbursed reimbursement after it's been?
No, no, uh, once they raise enough to pay for half of it, then we would then, that, that's kind of where I, what I was thinking about. I think ten thousand was the number we were ballparking around before at our other session. I think that's a lot on the budget that we currently have.
Jerry, can you?
That's kind of what I was thinking about.
Can you remind us how much we have in the budget for that? It's like thirteen thousand, twenty-two thousand?
Twenty-two.
Okay. I, um, I also agree that we should help like Deb. I, I believe you had said fifteen grand or something. And originally they had come in here asking for just ten thousand dollars. I also wanted just to know normally when people come in with quotes, is the actual quote from the companies that they get the, um, the options from? And while they did a beautiful job and I feel like we most likely trust them, it's not the norm to have it in this beautiful PowerPoint. With that said, I agree with Deb and I think that we should definitely provide some money, perhaps maybe eight thousand. But I don't think we should deplete the budget for it.
Josh, did you have anything to add?
I, I, I agree with them.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my, my feeling was to, um, realistically, more I thought about it was to pay in full, not to exceed fifteen K. My only thought on this is that, uh, this has some physical structure to it, like setting posts and stuff like that on town property. And so currently we leased that field to Durham youth baseball. Do you remember how long the lease is?
That's pro a long time.
Yeah, is it like a hundred years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, where I just feel a little bit weird about not paying for all of it is that like, in the future, you have a team that is like, oh, we pay for half of it, you pay for half of it. Who owns it?
Right.
And so now it's on, on town property, so if we pay for a portion of it, are they finally saying, what, because town is buying, more or less the town will buy this and Durham youth baseball will contribute five thousand or ten thousand towards the town purchase of it? Because at the end of the day, who is the owner of the batting cage structure on town property? And so I just want to make sure we're thinking about that there.
No, that makes for a little sense.
Because like I want to ask them to pay for, you know, the, the backstop.
Right, but you also have to think about, you know, out of the entire town of Durham, how many have, how many families have kids playing baseball and utilizing that space? So it's, you're looking at all of the taxpayers across town.
Yeah.
And is it, I, I'm just, I have no idea if this is factual, but a third, I, like.
I think they have a hundred and ten kids or something like that.
So, yeah, so I mean, I just, it's not, I don't feel like it's out of place to deplete or exceed the amount of funds for this. But I do feel it's our duty as citizens and because, to your point, you know, they are members of the town, it is our town property and we should provide a sum.
My, go ahead, Josh. Uh, I think if something happens to the backstop or the fence, I think they're responsible for it under the lease. So, uh, and I think that it would go with the property. So at the end of the lease, if it's not renewed, then it would revert, the ownership is with the town. But I agree, it's twenty-two thousand dollars at a time when taxes are going, they've changed dramatically this year, they're going to change again. In two years, that money could be used to fix up some of the parks we have in town. There are other uses I think that more people might utilize. I think supporting them and helping out is a good idea. But I think depleting that budget and then asking, uh, you know, the entire town to pay what a hundred or so families are going to use every year, I, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I agree with that because at the same time, what do we lease the baseball field for, one dollar a year? So we can make the argument that where, you know, opportunity cost for the baseball field is huge because only a hundred families are using it and they're paying a penny of, a penny of kids. So I, I'm just trying to think about like, if we have this and we build it and then the baseball team pays for half of it. And right now, if, if you want to go over right, right now and throw first debate around that field, anybody in town's allowed to do that, you know? Anyone in town's allowed to go in when they're not having practice and utilize it. And I would hope that, that the batting cage would be the same. How does it work if we don't fund the whole batting cage? And then they say, well, we pay for half the batting cage, so we want to put a lock on it and no one in the community can use it outside of when we're there facilitating it. And I'm not saying this to be argumentative, I'm just trying to think through, think through the process, you know?
Right.
I think that would be a violation of their lease. I think it's, it's on the town property that belongs to town. And if they want, if they want it and they want our money and they want to put it up on the town property, then it's town property that anyone can use it. We're giving them the right to use it first. Uh, but when they're not using it, uh, if anybody can use it, I don't, to me, that's not, that's a non, non issue.
Yeah, and I think that was a fair attempt.
Yeah, I just, I think about intent and then have a changeover of people and stuff like that in the future and what that can end up being. So I'm just, I'm just, again, I'm.
And if you're a resident, that's fine, but.
I'm not going to vote against a, a partial payment. I'm just saying this is kind of the thought process that I've had over the last couple of weeks that I wanted to see what other people's thoughts were. And I understand that I'm in the minority and I'm not paying for the whole thing. So I'm just explaining as to why, so you don't think I'm all just expressing the desire to spend out of this one willy-nilly. So, um, do we have a current, current written policy about that field? And what is included in the, like in the lease for what they're allowed to use it for? Because I'm sure that like if, if I just decide to go over and start playing catch with my dog in there on a day that they're supposed to have a game, they have the ability to say, we leased this field, sorry.
Right, but being a lease contract, I don't, I don't know if it works or what.
Yeah, and so we, we just say, we, we would just tack this on to their, part of their lease of the field. This is now just part of the field. And I know currently like they generate ad revenue right from putting up signs on the field fence.
That's what I said.
Yeah, and so this would be another space for them to put up signage if they wanted. So we just treat it as an extension of the baseball field. So, cool, do we have a motion?
Well, wait, what are we motioning on?
What's the name, what's the name of the, of the?
I'm, I'm asking if anyone wants to make a motion.
Oh, uh.
Because I, I can make a motion, but no one wants to vote for my motion, so I, I don't, won't make my motion.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we contribute to a batting cage as requested by the coaches. The amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars from a recreation, from the recreation fund. And I think it should be, my motion would be to pay it when they are ready for installation. If that means they have to raise the additional funds needed, so they have the full amount before it gets started, then that's what the payout would occur.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second, okay.
Not to exceed eight thousand.
So your motion, a motion from Deb is to contribute to a batting cage for Durham youth baseball, not to, with our contribution, not to exceed eight thousand dollars and distribute it to the baseball team at the beginning of installation?
Well, when they have the other funds they need to actually ask for it.
I think that they have the funds already.
Okay.
Uh, so they, they would just, and because he had said at the meeting that, um, you know, if they wanted us, if he, if we wanted to wait to send that money until after the construction started, we, we could. And so I, I don't think that, I think that they have those funds, but I'm trying to think of a concise way to word the motion.
When funds are needed.
To build.
So, how about?
Yeah, you got a layer.
How about the, to be paid upon the, uh, the starting board?
There you go.
Yeah, so Deb has made a motion to approve eight thousand, up to eight thousand dollars towards a batting cage to be paid to Durham youth baseball at start of installation.
Out of the recreation.
Out of the recreation fund. The second from Rebecca, do we have any other discussion? Alright, all in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none, we make a motion. So, Jerry.
Oh, I think, oh, I should, I, can I mention something?
Yeah.
I, I just think, um, this is a good thing. I think supporting our youth and our families in this way is good. I don't know how many people are going to actually use the batting cage other than the people involved with the, um, the Durham baseball. But I think it's, uh, I think it's a good thing.
I agree. Any other, uh, so we're going to move into new business, but we need a motion to move into the board of assessors. So, so a motion from Josh, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that, that. Um, any questions? Tina, all in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none, looks like we have one, two, three, four abatements today? Three, sorry. I knew that, I was just seeing if you guys were paying attention.
And they were.
Does anyone have questions on any of these abatements? Because if not, I would make a motion to approve them as a slate. Alright, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the abatements at the slate? So we'll, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Alright, Rebecca. Do we have any questions on the motion? Any discussion? All in favor of approving abatements for map three lot thirty-five S, map five lot fifty-six one and map five lot fifty-six point five? All in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none, those all passed. And what's this municipal evaluation return here?
So that's something that Donna used her signature on. It's the state's evaluation of all of the funding in Durham.
Oh, where they, uh, adjust the home set exemption?
It's called the MBR.
Yeah.
Um, it's the, it all the way up. The official copy for it is in the consent agenda, so you don't have to.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, seeing here, this is a, shows that our twenty twenty-five certified ratio will be, is a fifty-three percent. For the, take a tax, uh, home set exemption. And that will go down again until we get our assessment done in twenty-seven. Any questions on this? Alright. I have a motion to sign the municipal valuation return.
A motion?
Uh, motion from Josh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Rebecca, okay, all in favor?
Any opposition? Seeing none, cool. Alrighty, do we move out of the, uh, board of assessors for the rest of this, correct?
Yes.
Alright, so I have a motion to leave the board of assessors. So Josh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none, cool. Alright, we need to have a public hearing on the state of main, you know, assistant maxims. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? So Josh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Deb, any questions? All in favor? Any oppositions? The public hearing is open. There's nobody here to, I don't think we received anything in writing. So, um, seeing that there's no public hearing, do, uh, I have a motion to close the public hearing. So Josh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rebecca, do I have any questions or, uh, discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none? And we've got our general assistance updates, um, uh, that we just have to sign off on as part of our, uh, pack here.
Yeah, that's, that's, because we follow the state policy.
Yeah. Absolutely. Alright, so the next thing is, I don't know if everyone had a chance to review this meeting and, uh, this information in the packet, but the, uh, RSU five has an early childhood transition task force that they're trying to develop and they're looking for members. So they want membership, one parent or community member from each town, one private care provider serving children ages three to four from each town, one select board of town council member from each town, one RSU five board of directors member from each town and three RSU staff members with expertise in early childhood education. So, um, does anyone on our board want to join us? You sounded really excited about it, Tim. I thought you all were going to say, Joe, you're going to have the youngest child next year, so you have to do it.
I'll keep you posted, yeah.
But, and I feel compelled to do it, but I don't have the time right now, so I'm happy as somebody else is. So if you want to do it, Rebecca, that'd be awesome.
Well, I figured neither of you guys would.
Yeah. Awesome, well, I appreciate that. But do anyone have, I'll make a motion to appoint Rebecca as our representative from the Durham select board. Does anyone second that?
I'll second.
Second, alright, alright, uh, any discussion?
I was going to make a motion to volunteer Rebecca.
Yeah. Perfect. I think you're going to do a great job.
That's going to be a big group, you know?
It's going to be very, I'm surprised how many people are participating to attend.
Yeah. Well, I think you can do a great job.
Yeah, it's a good effort and the four meetings.
Yeah, and the nice thing is they have them all laid out already here.
I know.
It's only four months of your time, so. Alright, all in favor, Rebecca?
Oh, yeah.
Any opposition? Like, alright, seeing none? Um, and just so anyone who's watching at home, this is, uh, was part of our agenda packet. I'm not going to read the entire, uh, art, the, the letter out from the, um, the school board, but they're just looking for memberships to be part of a early childhood task force. It's going to help them think about the pace and approach that makes the most sense for RSU five and how they can integrate early childhood services in a way that supports student growth from preschool through high school graduation. So I'm happy to have you on there, Rebecca.
So it looks like you'll have to email them?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yep.
Alright. Like I, I know we said this in the agenda and also had asked folks to just take a look at things. Um, I wanted to have a little bit of a discussion on the budget process. You know, we are obviously on, this will be our first year with a new date for a town meeting. And so, uh, this last budget process represented a year and a half of expenses. Next year will only represent one year of expenses, but it's just a slightly different timeline because we're going to be meeting, uh, at a different, um, having a town meeting at, at, you know, a full month later. So Jerry has pulled together, uh, kind of a, a schedule of what he thinks the budget process will look like or what he is planning on from the town staff side of things. And Jerry, did you want to go over this with us?
Yeah, I can kind of agree with you. So everything you see in green on this thing starting right from January fir-, uh, fifth is, uh, capital, capital stuff. So green is capital, so we're going to start on January fifth this year, getting that together. And then, um, we're going to work on the, the budget, staff, myself, the department heads right through, um, to February. And then, um, beginning of March, the department heads will submit their budgets to me. Well, I'll put it all together and then the first, uh, presentation of the budget will be on March tenth. And then you have two scheduled, um, select board meetings to go over that if you need them. Then on the last meeting, the April fourteenth meeting, hopefully we kind of finalize the budget then and hand it off to the budget committee to do their work. And then we're right, then we have other meetings. The purple stuff that you see down below, that's all the stuff that goes into the annual town report, that will start working.
The award-winning.
Right, the award-winning, right. And then by, hopefully by May seventh, the budget committee makes their recommendations to the select board. And we just follow this right, right on down through and we should be okay to meet these milestones if we follow the schedule. I think it gives plenty of time and of course we can adjust as we go.
Yeah, what I see here, Jerry, is it looks like the budget committee will have their first look at it on April sixteenth with the expectation of them being done with it on May seventh, so.
Right.
Because I'm about three weeks.
Right.
Okay. And then we have a meeting sandwiched in between those.
Yes.
So if we needed to make adjustments or, or wanted to make adjustments based off of budget committee feedback, we, from the first meet, uh, their first meeting, we could.
Yeah, so you'll, on that day, hopefully you'll approve the final warrant so we can get it prepared for the town meeting. Gives, gives us, we have some leeway in here, like, if we can stick to this as much as we can, it will give the staff, you know, time to.
Okay, where, where are the warrants being drafted on what date?
Uh, five, seven, twenty twenty-six. Oh, those, that's what I'm doing, sorry.
Those are the language ordinances again.
I see.
So we approve it?
Because we had a little bit of stickiness going on last time with, when the warrant language was ready and the budget committee felt that, you know, it shouldn't have, so.
Well, actually, that's a, that's a good point that you bring up, Deb, because one of the things, the budget committee has kind of their, like, their, uh, self-given charge of commenting on the warrant articles, the, 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 the recommendations, the warrant language. And so last year, they, even though they had the full budget, they didn't want to vote to approve it until after they had a copy of the warrant language. And so this is part of the reason why I want to start having this discussion now because it was kind of a sticking point there. And then the meeting that they had following that lasted two minutes. It was just like, oh yeah, we approved, we, 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 we checked everything off. And so that's some of the. And so that's some of the stuff we need to address with the process this year um to avoid those sorts of things.
And those are more or less the budget articles, that's what I mean.
Yeah, budget articles, that's the language of the law, yeah.
Right, the budget, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right, of course, right.
So the wa- the language is gonna be primarily the same thing, it's just gonna be different on this one here.
Yeah.
To this one.
Yeah, and that's where last year the complaint from the budget committee was that they were voting on the budget, not the language of the budget articles. Um, and so then we just said, you know, we wrote it out and then sent it to them the following meeting, and then they voted on that. So if they're going to want to vote um if they're gonna make recommendation, when this draft of the land use ordinance, which is due five, seven, twenty six, is that also when the budget articles will be due, or okay?
It's all in the same warrant.
Okay.
Yeah. That goes to town meeting.
So.
You got budget articles, you got plan use ordinances, and you got business articles.
Yeah, going backwards from that, if the budget committee is gonna make recommendations, I would say that five, seven, twenty six meeting would be more so the budget committee reviewing our budget warrant articles. And our four twenty eight, twenty twenty six regular select board meeting would be us setting those budget articles. And so then when we send them our budget on four sixteen,
Yeah.
whatever scheduled meetings they have from four sixteen to four twenty eight, the select board can be present there to ask their technical, they can ask their technical questions. But we will write our um articles on four twenty eight, and then that's what they will have to vote on before five, seven. You follow what I'm saying?
I do. Yeah. Again, it's gonna be primarily the same warrant language, it's just just different numbers.
One hundred percent. One hundred percent, you know, um, but here's, so one thing, and again, maybe this is gonna be a little, I wanna have a little bit broader discussion about the budget process here. But one thing that the feedback was last year was that we created, we created a budget, and we sent it to the budget committee. And there's members of the budget committee that felt that we should take their input on the budget into consideration after we, after we send them a budget, and we should possibly make changes to our budget based off of the feedback that they gave us. Whereas in the past, the select board has created a budget and said, here's our budget, the budget committee has added their recommendations on it, and then they move forward. And so if there's a back, if there's an anticipation to be a back and forth where we say, here's where we want a budget, and the budget committee says, we'd like to see something different, and then we say, sure, we'll adopt your changes as part of our budget, that's where things get kind of dragged out a little bit more. You follow what I'm saying? And so if we are saying that we're sending them our budget on the sixteenth, and that is our final budget, they can ask all of our questions, and then on the twenty eighth, we can um decide whether we have any input from them that we want to change, but we lock in our our art, our warrant articles when I look at this. That gives them the opportunity to meet on, you know, we send that to them on four sixteen, which is Thursday. That gives them the opportunity to meet the following week sometime between the nineteenth and the twenty fifth. And then the second week after we sent them to them, that's what we're locking in our budget. I think that they're gonna probably be frustrated that they're gonna have one week of review before we write the warrant article, uh the budget warrant.
What's the harm in us doing that, listening to them and coming back on the twelfth and saying, hey, I like what they said?
Want to bring a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's the meaning twelve?
It's like we'll approve the final warrant.
Be twelfth, be twelfth.
Right. It's not, that's that's what I thought that meant too. Is so we're approving the final warrant on the twelfth, and that's with the recommendation, so with that night, that night, if we decide to change something, I think we can.
Yeah.
But they're gonna, the the I thought that we needed on May seventh to have the budget warrants locked in as the land use ordinances.
As the warrant.
Yeah, that's just the land use, you have nothing to do on May seventh.
Okay, so we.
So so everything that, so all of the meetings that you do are colored blue.
I'm sorry, I misread this, yeah. So on the twelfth, we will approve the the warrant language.
Yeah, approve final warrant.
But what we ran into last year is that the budget committee did not wanna vote, make their recommendations until after they saw our final warrant language, not just our budget. And so it, on this timeline, they would need me, then need to meet on the thirteenth to approve, to give their recommendation on our warrant language, so it can be sent to the printer on the fourteenth.
Oh, I think our budget's only gonna really change on the twelfth if it has to do with changes recommended by them. So I'm not very sympathetic.
I agree with you, but I, this is what we, this is what we got into last year of here's our recommendations, and they said, there's some yelling, some con- consternation, and then it was said, we can't vote on any of your recommendations until we see warrant language, because in their kind of self written charge, they vote on warrant language, not on budget lines.
But you just said the warrant language doesn't change.
It doesn't change, it's gonna be numbers.
So.
I I understand that it doesn't change, but I'm just saying that the process for them has been, they're not willing to vote on it unless they see the warrant language, even though we can give them the number. That's what we, so last year, we gave them the budget, we voted on it and said, here's our budget, we're going to draft the warrant language to represent this budget, and they said, until you send us a copy of the warrant language, we won't vote on our recommendation.
And I think they got together about the next day.
It was the next day, and it was a two, two minute meeting.
Yeah.
And so I'm just seeing, if we can avoid that frustration.
We can, we can give them for the seventh our recommended numbers and then come back on the twelfth, and if it changes, it changes. Yeah, it it will either align with that, which is what they'd be looking for, or it would, so um, you know, I think they can make their recommendations based on that, and
I agree.
I'm I'm, again, I'm not overly sympathetic, because the the warrant article's gonna say the number based on the budget, and.
Agree.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you know, they can, they can, i- if if they're convincing enough, they'll change our minds, and.
Well, and the other other thing I was bringing up here is last year, some of the frustrations vocalized to us was that the budget committee was concerned that we were gonna write warrant language without their input on what it should be. And I think that that's where we're starting to get into this this sticky wicked of what is the objective of that committee? Is the objective of that committee for us and that committee to sit together and come up with an agreed upon budget? Or is the objective of that committee to make a budget recommendation of their own?
Can I read their, from their bylaws?
Yeah.
Just to, just to remind ourselves? So this, they have six points. Make recommendations regarding each warrant article having a financial impact. Review and make recommendations on annual capital expenditures proposed by the municipal officers. Review the long range capital improvement plan for the town and its annual fiscal impact. Maybe this was done a long time ago, two thousand fifteen they were signed. Um, review and make recommendations on supplemental appropriations and expenditures and other budgetary action whenever whenever proposed by the municipal officers. Annually review the report of the auditor and make recommendations for meeting the needs identified by the auditor. Make such other recommendations of fiscal ma- matters as it may, from time to time, be advisable. That's what's in their bylaws that was signed by the group at the time of two thousand fifteen.
Yeah. And the challenge with those bylaws is that that's not tied to any state or town policy. And so they don't even do half of that stuff. They don't review the au- they have, since I've been a member, none of them have reviewed the, they've never had meetings to review the audit report.
Right.
Um, they're not making the, those sorts of comments on capital improvement.
Well, I think that goes back to one of the goals that we have, is to really, I mean, what the strategy will influence which is.
Yeah. Yeah, ab- absolutely.
So.
So I think that that's a good segue to say, I think we have a policy here that the select board is interested in. Um, but if, maybe we need to have a discussion with the budget committee about what their process is gonna look like um this year, this for the next budget as well. And even like what that role is going to look like, because right now, none of that is defined in state statute. The only thing that's listed is if there is a budget committee, you have to include their recommendation. All other budget committee language is pertaining to county government, not municipal government. Um, and so right now, they're kind of operating with a set of bylaws that haven't been approved by our legislative body, which is the people of the town. And so, and they modified it last year, but they didn't put it on their website, so they made some some modifications at their first meeting, so I think we need to have some sort of workshop um figuring out what this process is going to look like, 'cause even here, we're just vocalizing like a a a word of mouth process where we give information to the budget committee. We don't have to do any of that. We can write a budget and accept our warrant, our budget warrant, and then send it to them, and we don't have to attend any meetings with them. We don't have to have any public engagement with them. We just say, hey, here's our budget, make your recommendations, and then there's no need for us to engage with you, um, because there's nothing that dictates what that process is, you know? So it's just really challenging, because when you have, you know, four board members, usually five, we might all five have a different view of what the process should look like. When they have nine board members, all nine of them might have a different view of what the process looks like, and I think we just need to get something figured out so we can maybe get a process locked in as a warrant article at the next town meeting, you know? Because for for what we need from town staff and for our board, I feel like this looks really good.
Yeah.
It works.
I think we should make some slight adjustments based on the discussion, and then maybe we could send this out to the fi- we could actually send this out to the finance committee.
Yeah, it's all on the website too.
Uh uh. True, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But just, then they can meet and go over it and uh have any comments?
Yeah, so what what, let's let's to your point, what do you, what would you like to see us make for some adjustments in here Deb?
Well, um, I was taking some very cryptic notes.
Oh, that's alright.
I just want to make it very clear, you know, when the budget committee, if they'll see the warrant articles or not in advance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when will we be finalized for those? And if that's on five seven, we just have the land use ordinances there, but we don't have the budget articles.
Yeah, maybe we just need to move our um, so that five, seven would be.
I think you said setting budget budget articles on four twenty eight. That's the kind of what I noticed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is move that five, twelve approves final warrant budget articles to four twenty eight is kind of what I'm thinking. Um, and and so that means that we're giving.
That gives them one week to review it, um, that's.
Where was it before that though? Was there?
That was, so before we were gonna do a five, twelve is where we were gonna set the warrant budget budget um articles for town meeting. Whereas if we were to do that on four twenty eight, they aren't getting the budget until four sixteen, so that gives them, and they usually spend two or three meetings working on the budget, not just one, and sometimes they do multiple meetings a week, other times they spread them out.
And we also remember we had the issue with the data changing, and there was a little bit of complaining about that, so I just, if we could avoid any possible way we could avoid some of the things we went through last year.
But at, but at the same time, since.
Maybe that's just not doing them, I don't know.
At at the same time, we are starting this process and dictating it really far in advance.
Yes, this is.
If we tell them now, we're going to approve our budget on four fourteen and send you the recommendations, and then we're going to set warrant articles at our four twenty eight meeting, and we give them six months advance to say, you know, if you, that gives you all a week to meet, if you need to meet three nights in a row to do this, like that's on, I mean.
Yeah, so you're.
And also, all of our budget meetings where we ta- we ask questions are open to the public, and a lot of times, they'll, many of their members will attend, so they're not going incompletely blind, you know? Josh, did you have something?
Jerry. The what's the harm if we tell them on five, seven, give us your recommendations on our draft warrant articles, and you vote, you have a meeting either after our meeting on five, twelve, or on five, thirteen, to approve them to your final vote? Is there any problem with that?
No.
I, to to me, making them do it in a week, on school vacation, um it's it's not, I mean.
So what you're proposing Josh is we would then say
On on five, seven.
on on five, thirteen, they have a meeting to approve, to make their warrant article.
Where they can do it at, you know, seven thirty on five, twelve, we'll be done, we'll, you know, we'll be done with our stuff by then hopefully.
Yeah.
Or just sit there and eat, come to our meeting and sit there and hear it with the final warrant.
With that, and. And then walk across the street or in the parking lot or or and and have a quick meeting.
I'm with Josh, I agree with that.
I I'd rather have them do it five, thirteen, because I don't think doing it oh.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think you're, I think what you just proposed there Josh works, is if we keep this as it is, what we're just telling them is, we're gonna provide our warrant language on five, twelve. We're gonna make our time to attend your meetings, to ask, answer any questions. Um, our budget's gonna be set, you're gonna have a pretty solid idea of what our warrant language is gonna be. If, like you said Josh, if it changes, it would be changing most likely to need any additional recommendations you all make. And so we're we're gonna lock in in five, twelve, you need to lock in before five, fourteen, your recommendations. And so if we just give them that expectation, you know, at at January one, we say, hey, five, fourteen is when it's all gonna happen, and five, twelve is when we're gonna make our recommendations. We're telling them like, you're gonna have to have a meeting five, thirteen to make it work.
We could ask, we could ask them to have have the to to have a meeting after the four, our four, twenty eight meeting, when we're gonna come up, we're have our draft language, right? So they're gonna have time to review or the draft.
Yeah, they. Yeah.
So really, all it is, all they're gonna be looking, they'll have all language. If they have questions about the language or wanna make changes to the language, which there shouldn't be, because it's gonna be in the same language.
Yeah.
Um, uh then, uh they, they'll have that, they're just voting on either after a meeting on twelve or on thirteen.
Yeah.
Uh, here's your the final number, so if they.
So fun- So functionally, it'll work the same way it worked last year, just rather than them deciding last minute that they wanna have that extra meeting, they're knowing
Right.
five months in advance, they're gonna have to have a meeting sometime between five, twelve and five, fourteen.
Yeah.
Right, and all I was saying on the four, twenty eight meeting that on the paper we're looking at, it doesn't say today, setting budget articles. I mean.
No, it says that on five, twelve.
Yeah, they should say draft review of of warrant articles.
On four, twenty eight?
On four, twenty eight.
Yeah, absolutely. That's when we should be talking about all the articles, business articles.
Yeah.
Right.
'Cause the budget articles language, again, will not change, it's just gonna be, we're gonna be plugging in new numbers.
They're not gonna spray, right.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that.
So I mean, they wanna look at what the budget article wants, other than look at last year's warrant, warrant.
Yeah, the number's gonna be the same, if they just need us to add the words
Budget numbers. It's not my everything.
Okay.
to approve this, which would be good.
This is, this is, this is good, this is very.
And this will, and this gives us time to do that, 'cause there'll be some other articles, I'm sure, I don't know about.
Yeah, definitely.
So could you make that one change Jerry? So the four, twenty eight will say draft review of of uh budget articles and warrant articles?
Yeah.
'Cause we'll be done with our budget by four, fourteen. Then that gives them a full month to do what they need to do.
Does it make sense for us, I don't wanna add extra work, but have a workshop with them between four, twenty eight and five, twelve? And say let's just in that, in that way.
Well, I figured we would make ourselves available to attend, like we did in the past, attend their meetings, answer their questions, go for budget.
If they ask us.
If they ask us to. I mean.
Or I'd ra- I'd rather have a discussion than answer just questions.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'll workshop with all of you then, would be ideal.
So maybe rather, the, actually, that's a good point, rather than saying if you choose to invite us and choose to allow us to answer your questions, we'll just say we're inviting you to a workshop where we will answer collectively the questions about the budget. That's our workshop with you. Now you all go and do your own thing.
I I think.
Because what you're describing is one meeting instead of us attending, me and you attending three meetings.
You know. We can still, we can still attend the meetings, but I think.
Well, only if they invite us. They made that very clear last year, only if they invite us, and we can only answer the questions they want us to answer.
Right. Right, I I think having a discussion because frankly, I was a little disappointed in some of the uh, I I I won't say lack of understanding, I feel like some of the things are still, they're they're still pushing things out there now which I I think are not accurate how we reflect on them. So I think a discussion is is better, and that will make sure we're all on the same page, and uh so I'm just coming up.
Yeah, so let's take a look here. Um, if we're having our we're having our budget finalized on the fourteenth and giving them the documents on the sixteenth. We're saying sometime after the sixteenth, but before the twenty eighth, we would do a we would invite the budget committee to a workshop where we go over it with them, and that's their opportunity for us to workshop it with them.
I I would say after the twenty eighth, before the twelfth. I would say after the, after the twenty eighth, before whatever the, whatever the
So May fifth.
Before before May, by May sixth, so that we can have, if anything changes, we can, we can throw ideas into the agenda.
So between, so at some date between April twenty ninth So between, so at some date between April twenty ninth to
April to May twelve.
May May fifth is a Tuesday.
May fifth is a Tuesday.
I would Tuesday, let's let's set it right now.
And.
Yeah, I agree. So let's add that in Jerry, five dash five dash twenty twenty six will be us inviting them to our workshop to give them the opportunity to ask us whatever questions they have about the budget.
And then give, that gives them two days to get the recommendations back to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, cause they can be having their own from from four sixteen before five five. They're having their own meetings, they're doing their own thing, they're preparing their questions and all that sort of stuff.
Which they can be around in that workshop, which works.
And then they bear that up, so rather than one of us going and attending three of their meetings
Yeah.
Yeah.
which have the past couple of years frankly have been inappropriate with people yelling and you know insults being leveled and stuff like that. And those are only meetings that we can only go to if we're asked to, um and we can only answer questions if we're asked questions. This would be saying, instead of going through that process which clearly is creating consternation, we're gonna say we're gonna give you the budget, we're gonna let you all workshop it, you prepare your questions over the course of however many meetings you have and then on five five twenty twenty six, we will invite you to our meeting. We will open the floor for you to ask us questions about the budget, we'll give you our answers and then we will receive your your recommendations on five seven twenty twenty six.
Just to be clear though, I think we can go to the meetings, I think we can't answer questions unless they ask us.
Right, that part.
Cause the meetings are open to the public.
Right, but that's where this now gives us the ability to facilitate a discussion between them rather than just relying on whatever the current winds might be to invite us or not invite us or things like that. So let's put that in there Jerry as well.
Five five twenty six workshop.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would consider me in other committee meetings during that date.
Yeah.
That we would know of the first Tuesday of the month.
There there's no, there's nothing standing.
For that. Uh, all right, I just want.
Cool, well, I think that this is a good step in the right direction. Um maybe we should invite someone from the budget committee in to share this with them or at least type it this finalized and and then send it to the committee chairs.
Would you like that, that's me.
Yeah, if you wanna just finalize this and bring it to us for next meeting and if it looks all good, we can I can send it with the board's approval, I can send it to the budget committee chair and vice chair and say this is our proposed schedule.
I can print this up for you and just send it to you and then you can send it to them and then I would take off.
Yeah, are you all okay on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I can see see the board, Jerry, on that as well.
Yeah, so let me just make sure I'm straight.
And this also encourages the budget committee to start thinking about the budget process before.
Right.
Then, you know.
So on four twenty eight twenty six, we're gonna do a draft reviews of warrant articles and we're gonna tidy that up.
Yeah.
And five five twenty six workshop with the budget committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um so this brings up the other question though of like we're trying to develop a process here. Do we wanna go through some sort of process of bringing a warrant article to the town to lock into our town's legislative document, a budget committee process with the select board? Because I don't know how we navigate this, the budget committee was created in nineteen thirty three and we've just been running with it since then, they were never given, um there's not a town approved document telling them what to do, it's kind of just been a self given charge for the last ninety something years, um and I just, you know, we as a select board have rules that we have to follow that are laid out by the state and so when people vote for us, they know what authority they're giving us. When we look at our land use ordinance, we know what authority goes to the the planning board, what authority goes to the budget of the appeals board, et cetera. There's not really that document that's been approved by the legislative body for the budget committee and so I think we need to make a process, work on a process towards establishing something like that. And so.
I agree.
Do we think that that's something that should be workshopped um before the next town meeting? So we can establish some warrant language ahead of the next town meeting for the town to vote on and decide upon.
Um you did have that as one of the goals.
It's one of our goals, you know, and so and so my goal was for us to address the
Sure.
budget committee process, but changing this just how we're proposing it to them, I don't feel fully meets that goal.
Oh yeah, no, I understand.
I'd like to, I'd like to lock something in um and allow the town to have a debate on that. Now the challenge is is that public hearing process and that all stuff's gonna be happening at the same time that the budget process is actually happening because of the timeline for when you post public hearings and stuff like that, but um a lot of this stuff early on, really the select board isn't gonna be diving in to the budget until March tenth. Everything else is kind of happening with department heads, so maybe between January and uh first March tenth is when we can have that, create a workshop to in in and come up with some sort of recommendation for how we wanna move forward with the uh uh establishing some sort of legally recognized authority for the budget committee.
You have two, I mean schedules, you have two open meetings on the tenth and the twenty fourth.
Wanna put that right on the tenth, February tenth?
Uh are we not meeting January seventh, twenty seventh? That's not wrong.
Is it not on there today?
It's not a meeting, it's a Sunday.
It's, that's a meeting, the thirteenth and the twenty seventh are meetings. So that's just missing.
Okay, that's missing, sorry. Gotta put that on there.
I'd like to still put it on the tenth, cause the twenty seventh might be a hard one for me.
Cause I have a due date.
To make four days after the due date. So sneaking out to go to a workshop, it might be a little tough for me on that day, but maybe two weeks later will be a little bit better. I mean, we could also do this on the thirteenth. First.
Or is anything, is there?
I don't know, that's any better word?
Is there anything?
It's that's before, but there's there's no good for me.
Wait, does it? Isn't there anything recommending us from doing it in a a more near term upcoming select board meeting?
December?
And each meeting we're talking about goals. I actually thought today we were gonna talk about that a little bit more, but you know.
Do we wanna do December ninth?
Time is really flying.
That is fine.
Yeah, cause so our options would be October twenty eighth.
No, that's that's so much stuff.
That's not good.
Right, what no, which which I I'm saying just like physically it is an option, realistically it's not.
Oh, oh.
And then we have two November meetings. Um we already have on the schedule, maybe moving the November uh eleventh meeting due to the holiday. Um November twenty fifth possibly. So I'm gonna be, I would be out of town, yeah.
That's that's Thanksgiving.
No, yeah.
Um well.
December ninth could be a plus one.
December ninth? Yeah, let's let's put put a pin there for December ninth. For budget committee. Right. I also do think we need to alert the budget committee that we're gonna be having these sorts of discussions too.
For sure.
Cause this isn't, it's the intent is to um subvert anyone's power, but rather to get us all on the same page.
So what would you like to call that?
Um budget committee.
Budget process with budget committee?
Maybe a budget budget committee process workshop, I don't know.
Future future of the budget committee?
Budget committee.
Goals.
Rules and responsibilities. No, that sounds like we're dictating something we can't, but um.
Right, elected, so you can.
Well.
You just wanna have a discussion, budget process discussion.
Budget process, future budget process or something.
Future budget process.
Budget process discussion.
Yeah. That's a separate process than what we have right here, which I'm happy with what we have right here.
And that's December ninth.
Yeah.
So we'll put that just in our on eleven on our agenda.
I like it.
So I'm gonna do one page and I'd start a two week trial the the day after, so by this one. I think I give my two cents. Jerry, Jerry can show me.
All the things you're gonna miss, I think, are your favorite ones.
Actually, that doesn't work well for me, so that looks good.
Uh, whatever.
I shouldn't be in town, but let's put it there. Okay, cool, let's put that there, alright, um and so just to have a little bit of discussion there, I don't wanna beat this to death, but in 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 advance of that, we'll do, need to do a little bit more prep, but my goal for that meeting is to find a path, develop some sort of warrant language to bring the budget committee's roles and responsibilities and in charge into our town's guiding document and approved by the the voters of town. And maybe it would be helpful if we flagged out some meeting, maybe Kristen could even either have a presentation given to us about why there isn't any legal authority here currently and that it's just kind of a a word of mouth process that we're using right now. Because ultimately, we just don't have like, we don't have any sort of legal precedence here.
I, I, you're gonna give us well before that date sort of framework of what it'll look like?
I could, I could, I could pay bottom steer what other town municipalities have for warrant writing.
Maybe work with Kristen or MMA to pull something together as a couple of different options.
Yeah. Yeah, I can set up. Yeah.
So I think it's important to have it in the documents, we all know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And if there's a question we know where to go for the bill for, by the board for us.
Yeah, cause the challenge right now is for us, our guiding document, our guiding document is the state statute. For everything else in our town that falls under the land use ordinance. And so that process is scheduled under the land use ordinance, a budget committee doesn't have a state statute. It doesn't fit nicely in land use ordinance, we don't have a town charter, so
Their advisory.
So how how do we make sure that it has some legal teeth to it, you know?
Would be an ordinance, would be a legal teeth.
Right.
Yeah, so I can give you, I can come up with some examples or or you know, some sort of oil like that, then you could all
Yeah.
you know.
Yeah, cause I know like other, some municipalities have an elected budget committee, other municipalities have an appointed budget committee. That and it lays out what the goal of that committee is, um right now, this committee doesn't do anything in a way of like assisting with the budget process, they just add their opinion to the existing budget, so it's not like they're helping craft the budget or making capital improvement recommendations or anything like that, some towns, they do do that. We just gotta figure something out.
But I think they're more than just an advisory financial group because they are sitting at the town meeting. With us putting up different numbers possibly.
Yeah. But but the same time, like the only charge they have, like even having them sit at the town, even having them sitting at the town meeting up there like
Today.
not many other municipalities do that, like, cause their recommendation is right there on the
Right.
the um and then to have people sit up there, but then also like come speak as individuals
Yeah.
as opposed to speaking as a board, it's just, it's a messy process for them.
Yes, yeah, I do, I think also that it needs to be looked at.
Yeah. If you look in the MMA elected officials manual, it'll tell you that um budget committees are an advisory.
Right.
They're an advisory board.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Okay, let's put that on the ninth.
You see in June thirteen. Oh boy, I'm actually on that.
And let's date this too, when you send it out officially.
Yeah.
Let's show something here. Can we move over and look at this?
Yeah, I'm looking at my schedule here, but yeah, um. Sorry, I just gotta pull this schedule. And that's actually problematic. Alright, well, I can figure out here, yeah, let's uh go with this, what we have here. Um do we need a vote or are we just gonna let Jerry adjust this and, yeah.
No, 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 that's.
Cool.
Good work, that's good, yeah, that's like that.
Well, thanks.
Very nice Jerry. Uh just a discussion here, November uh fourth eleventh is a a state holiday, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And we have a board meeting planned, do we want to cancel that meeting?
Um, yeah, I can.
Stack that off, yeah, and rather than reschedule it, just give ourselves a little bit of breathing room or that week to take a deep breath as we can our.
But I, okay, and then we'll have the meeting on the twenty fifth, which is the day after Thanksgiving, like.
Uh the week of Thanksgiving, but
The week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
I will be absent that week. Um I I'm out of out of state, uh so would we rather just instead of meet the week of the twenty, of the week of Thanksgiving, just have one meeting in November, maybe on the eighteenth? So we cancel the eleventh meeting and we move the Thanksgiving week to the eight, meeting to the the third week, so we have one meeting the third week of November?
I I already P A posted that.
Okay. I make a motion, we cancel our November eleventh meeting and move our November twenty fifth meeting to November eighteenth. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Alright, discussion. Um if we're canceling the eleventh meeting, we're not gonna put it on the fourth because that's an election day.
Yeah.
Um and then I think that so people don't have to be pulled in the week of Thanksgiving and I'm gonna be gone anyways, not that meetings need to only take place if I'm here, but if I'm gone um it brings, well, we'll have a fourth, a fifth board member by then, but um, oh no, no, we won't. Oh, we will, yeah, that'll be, that would be their first meeting.
Yeah, well.
I say we move to the eighteenth, have one meeting in November and then we will, we'll just handle it that way.
Does that create any issues for payments or bills or anything like that?
No.
I don't think so.
Meaning if it does, if you guys don't mind, you could always pop in, we need these three of you, yeah.
So I don't want.
Yeah, fossilized.
Hope you're around.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so the motion, I made, Rebecca second, so the motion on the table is to cancel November eleventh and move November twenty fifth to November eighteenth, do we have any other questions or discussions on the motion? All in favor? Any opposition, seeing none, that is approved. Also, let's put that on the counter here.
We should um make a notice about that in the newsletter and come out just so people know.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that's literally less than thirty days from today, which is whack, but.
Yeah, I believe that, I believe that.
Did you say whack?
Yeah.
I was about to ask the same question.
Like like the crazy.
I know what whack means, Joe, okay?
Is that, is that, is that, is that a old saying, is that a two news saying?
How old, how old are you?
Very old.
I I was about to say the same thing, thank you. Is is that a saying from from your cohort, like is that good or is that bad, I don't know.
It's, I, you know, very wrong right now, but let's move on.
I've heard it for a while. Okay. Alright.
Actually, five twelve says up.
Hey, the neural says up.
We're gonna.
I'm anyways, alright, manager report.
We're gonna.
Well, man, you know, I don't have a lot, I will say that uh they have some teeth value.
Trying to break, sorry, I broke this half of the table, you're kidding me?
Uh so, which has been quite a eternal so far, last two, it's been pretty busy. Um so tomorrow is the last day that you can pay your taxes without having interest accrue, so that's good, we've done pretty well. We'll run a report maybe the next uh select board meeting to give you a percentage on how much taxes I've been paying.
Just real quick, are we gonna have to dip into the?
No, we're good, we're in good shape.
Yay.
Yeah, so we're not going, I just for people watching, I know there was, there's concerns about the um
Yeah.
the tip, but we're not gonna have to utilize it enough, taxes have come in.
No. Yeah, we got, we got enough to to carry us.
I still think that was really good foresight on you to set that up in case, you know, to, it's it's better to be in a position that we can easily access it versus the opposite where we're in a tough spot and we can't access it.
Yeah. We were uh, we were down to about four hundred thousand in the bank with a eight hundred thousand dollar payment. We were uh, we were down to about four hundred thousand in the bank with a eight hundred thousand dollar payment to the county.
Uh huh.
Obviously, we can't, you know, couldn't pay that, so making that phone call to the county and asking if they could just wait a little bit and then being no problem at all.
Awesome.
So that worked out really well, so now we're good, we don't, we won't have to use any of the tape. But definitely had it, not needed.
Turned in, yes, sorry.
And that needed not had it, so you don't wanna be not set up in case you need it, cuz you don't have a bunch of checks in the government, um.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They, I think, we think we have all the bats removed.
Oh, great.
Yeah, um, it was interesting cuz um the the day they did it, um, the next morning, there were bats climbing down the public works building looking for another hole to to get in, um, so next next thing is they'll go out there and do the best job they can vacuuming all that up and then they'll disinfect it and hopefully uh and then they'll remove the little trap doors and when they remove the trap doors, they'll they'll affix something there permanently so they can't get back in, so so there's that.
Do we need to move those doors down to the public works building, with your building?
Yeah, yeah, or even this one has a pretty good little size for a little bit.
Oh, jeez.
But uh, interesting how that all, how they, what they did.
Yeah, how that, yeah.
Uh huh.
So.
And essentially they go one way exit for the bats, so when they come out at night, they can't get back in.
Right. And they weren't happy, they weren't happy not being able to come back in, but um, other than that, no, there's really not much to really report on, things are, things are going, it has been busy um, with with taxes, the the staff has been incredibly busy, they do a great job, like you know, being closed on that day to go to the conference, you know, they felt the pain of that, um.
Would the staff enjoy the conference though?
I think they did, yeah.
Yeah.
It's always good to go to those, um, yeah, I I loved it, I was able to talk to the the head person at DOT who was there, who I think is gonna paint that little island.
Oh, yeah.
Uh huh.
So I was able to talk to the guy that can actually get that done, so I think that's gonna happen, probably not until next year, it's getting a little late. Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, thanks, um, we did hire a public works employee, um, he was an employee here before, what's what's his name? I I don't even, this happened today, Dale, he said he came from another municipality, so we 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 took somebody from that other.
Yeah.
So it's good to have him, so today was, today was his first day, so
CEO, project guy.
I Calvin tried to bring him in twice to meet me, but I was too tied up, I didn't actually get a chance to to shake his hand, but I'm sure I will tomorrow, well, actually I will tomorrow cuz I've got training all day, but um.
So that leaves one spot open.
So we have one spot open, um, still. And we're still advertising and hopefully we can, we can fill that, um.
At the open house?
Yeah, the open house, yeah, I heard the open house went really well, there was, did any of you else show up in the open house?
No, I was predisposed, but uh, a lot of people.
I guess there was over, well over a hundred people here.
And one thing that I know, um, oftentimes with people come because they're bringing their kids to see fire truck, but there's a lot of people who didn't have children who just came to see the fire department, which is cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a really good exposure to the, to the town, so. Other than that, I don't, I don't, I'm busy, I'm just like.
Jerry, is there any update to that potential, I have to say, or can?
The only update I can tell you is that when we sent the letter back asking for the abatement, we sent it certified and we got the green card back, so they got it.
Okay, okay, that's good.
They're probably closed right now, though.
So.
Oh, right, there's probably a lot of them at the campus.
So let's keep our fingers crossed on that, I I I think there's reasonable cause to give us the abatement, but it's really up to them, so
Hmm.
Uh huh.
But they do have it, I I wouldn't send something like that out without it being certified, cuz I, it would drive me crazy not knowing if they know this or that, cuz they're not the most responsive
What I, yeah, that.
agency in the world, so, um, but let's hope, keep our fingers crossed that we're in good shape and
No.
they don't ding us with that, you know, watch it if they do, we'll deal with it if they do, so. Yeah, so that's all I got.
Awesome, thanks Jerry. Um, for a chair report, I don't have anything other than I'm just happy to see the turnout for the uh the open work, open house for the fire department um over the weekend, know a lot of staff, a lot of friends, and the other thing too, I wanna say that I was excited to see is uh uh, once a year, the York County Chiefs Association puts on a big training workshop and there's several Durham volunteer firefighters who went and got some really good training, so we get some uh people who get trained to be drivers of equipment, uh, of apparatuses now. Some people who got trained on like blowing, rescuing, um, all kinds of stuff, so it's just cool to see you know, that people in our community are volunteering and they're not getting paid on those days, they're going on their own to get that sort of training and uh bringing bringing back to make our community stronger, which I think is really awesome. Josh, you got anything?
Uh, just, you know, I I found out Friday, I had to go to a funeral on Saturday, and I wanted to send the chief a message because I still had that the the meeting we had after bulky waste day where none of us went and there was some disappointment, I'll call it, uh, so I'm glad that you know, you made it. I didn't leave it, Megan, no, I was, it's the first time I haven't gone in five years, I think, my kid loves it. Uh, she was disappointed, we're excited to go, um, but I I also just wanna say, Jerry, uh, we talked about your contract first thing. You know, I know there are people who don't like the position you're in, I guess I'll call it, I don't know if it's you or just the position, uh, but um I I think it's important to say, and we've said it before, all the things you brought to the town, um, I think stabilization, leadership. Uh, you know, you've been uh find, saving us money, finding us money, doing all that stuff. Um, and so I'm excited that you're you're sticking around. Uh, hopefully that means until retirement.
Right.
Um, I just, you know, it's, you know, it's like the position or not, the citizens voted on it and we have it and, you know, I think uh, I think you've done a great job, so I just wanna say thank you. And and Jessica told us how busy she was, and so, you know, thank all of them, and, uh, you know uh, you guys are are busting your butts and it shows, everybody sees it, so.
Thank you, appreciate you guys.
Alright, thanks Josh, uh, Deb.
Okay, I do a couple things, I also wanna tag on to that, Jerry, I really um just wanna say publicly how much I appreciate your work and I think you're instrumental in making this town run and you know, close the loopholes and process gaps and procedural compliance issues that we've had that we didn't even really know until you got deeper to the mix, so um, the five, uh, pass notes on this, I just wanna see, the five year term provides stability and continue um continuity for our town's operation and long-term planning efforts, we got a lot of things coming up and the fact we have a continuous stable leader here is a big ticket item. I I think that it's really going to um make sure we have the consistent leadership to come through these, all these issues that we have coming in the next handful of years, so I think the five-year contract um was appropriate and in the best interest of of the town. Um, I'm so happy you agreed to that, and I think the benefit package that we agreed to demonstrates our um, competence in your management application, your style, and that will have stayed forward, moving forward with your leadership in the town, so really, thank you for
Thank you.
for your work. Um, I did have a resident reach out to me complaining again about a speed issue. Um, speeding on the road on um Pinkerbrook Road from the new bridge, I'll say it's new, it's actually not new, it's probably six years old. From the Shiloh Road, you know, and she said she had, you know, reached out to the Ingris Stargan Sheriff's Department about a year ago on it and there was some conversation back and forth, but nothing changed, I think we need to go to put something on a near-term agenda about, is there some possibility that we can get some of these digital standalone speed signs, maybe in this particular case, we should look at it's a thirty-five mile an hour area and the sign is way down by the bridge and people are busting tails, you know, through there, maybe there needs to be another sign, but I don't so that led me to look at some older emails about other complaints we've had about speeding, and I know we only have we don't really have a lot of control, but we really, as a board haven't taken any real action. And maybe there's some things we could do, look at where we currently have speed limit signs on these areas that people complain that that have concerns about. I don't know how much these solar speed panels, but they've got a handful of them on Main Street in Lisbon Falls traveling out that way. That could maybe help, um, but I feel like we should, we should look at that and talk about it and maybe potentially do something or someone is gonna get hurt. I remember years ago, there was a kid that was um, that hit on her bike on Shiloh Road and I'm, I probably within a couple hours, somebody had one of those speed signs out there for a handful of weeks or whatever, slow traffic down. But this woman was nervous, I mean, there's there's mailboxes along that road and there are aging people there and that's not unusual, right, for other areas that have a problem, I was passed on the tail.
Can I just tell you, I uh was in court with one of the deputy sheriffs uh, last week, I think, I made a comment to him about um not seeing him recently in Durham. Uh, and the response was, you had your opportunity and you got, you voted it down. Uh, they're trying, they understand, I mean, I see them regularly and every time I see one of them, uh, especially a supervisor, I say, hey, you know, just come park at my house, I'll bring you coffee and food if you want. Um, and they're trying, but they're getting called out at other places, uh, and also we talked, I, we talked about the sign
Yeah.
uh, and the signs, you know, he thinks are a waste of money. He said, if you're gonna spend money, spend on hiring a detail and we'll come down, but.
I I I'm this, I mean, the signs help me when I'm driving and they're like, you know, you're too over somewhere.
We own one, the town has one, right?
Yeah, we have two.
Two, and we've, we moved.
They get moved around.
Calvin moves them around.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess we could ju, I mean, part of the challenge is like if someone calls and complains about speed and we say, alright, well, let's move the sign over there, if someone complains about speeds somewhere else, we can move the signs around. So I don't know if Calvin has a rotation about moving the signs around or something like that.
He does, he does move it to the squeaky wheel, you know, that folks that complain about.
I mean, it's a safety issue, it's.
Cuz it was over by the gate, right now, recent, most recently.
It's vulnerable. Yeah.
Yeah, so wait, just to clarify, because I mean, I was just passed, I was coming up from Lisbon Falls up one twenty-five and somebody passed me going up the hill, which blew my mind. But, so there are people who are psychotic and there is no um, speed sign there, to your point. So is that a DOT situation, is that something that?
Right, sure.
But, and those are the sorts of situations.
I mean, that's not, I know, anyone signs up and say it's a bad.
But 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 maybe what we can do is just like gather the complaints that we had in the last year, cuz we have a handful of them, or we, maybe we know which roads they are. Ourself.
It's all of them.
Okay, so diverse than others, but maybe look, let's look at where today the speed limit signs are, should we add more speed limit, should we
Yeah.
you know, move these uh, things that we already have, these digital boards.
Yeah, speed feedback.
Speed feedback boards, um to where complaints are coming in.
I like the one that said, thank you for putting a speed limit, cuz I got that.
Oh, that's nice, I never seen that.
I hadn't seen that before.
That's like you're going too fast.
That's a much bigger.
Is that what?
And I mean, that's, that's my report, can we take some action with that on our agenda, so.
I don't know.
Yeah, um, why don't we put it up on
Awesome.
I mean, I just don't know what what more we can do, cuz we had the conversation last year.
Well, you said, you know, look, how many actual speed limit signs are on the road and should we request to have more?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So that's one thing, another thing is these other signs.
So for that point, because there is no speed limit sign, is that a DOT request that just, from what I know, is that DOT requested Calvin makes directly to them? Or the, he asked directly, how does that work?
Well, if you want a speed limit sign up, that's not currently there, that should be there, that's the beginning of the zone, is it missing, was there one there before?
It's the same zone, I think, from the beginning.
I mean, it's a, it's a five-mile stretch, but, or not five miles, I think it's like two-mile stretch.
Same speed limit. There's one just past the bridge on the, when you go left on the one twenty-five, it's just past the bridge and then it's not, again, till you get to the forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought there was one over by Shiloh.
By that way.
I thought there was one by Shiloh.
It's, it's right, it's right by Shiloh, but that's like a three-mile stretch, I'm like, is that, I don't know.
Yeah. Wow.
So, so typically, speed limit signs are set at the end of each
Uh huh.
each zone, and then if there's a street that comes into the middle of that zone, they will put another one in both directions for depending on which day the traffic turns. So that's typically where the speed limit signs will, will bend up zone.
Outside of a, is that sign missing? If we said, hi, hey, DOT, we want you to put additional signage, is DOT gonna say, that's outside of our, 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 um
They're very.
design, are they gonna say, sure, but we need, we need to be charged, or?
They, they probably won't put the additional signs within the zone if there's nobody else coming into that zone. You know, prior to them seeing the speed limit sign, so you get, when you go into a zone, you get your speed limit sign and that's, that's what it is. And the motorists needs to know, that's what, that's their responsibility to know what the sign is. So they don't typically just put them randomly in the middle of the zone if there's no road coming into that zone.
Right, but if we have consistent complaints from the residents, that that is a risk point. Maybe they would be willing to go outside of the norm on those.
I just, I don't think the people going eighty miles an hour through their car, signs, you know.
Or can we get that digital sign over there?
You can get digital, we can get digital.
And ask them to get that digital sign over there.
You can get digital ones. Sure, but I don't know if the DOT would go out and put up additional signs because a resident complained. Cuz that's, that, that, I don't stay alive, I mean.
Yeah, could be everywhere.
But that's a, it's, it's what they get.
I mean, ev- every person that I talked to tells me that there's just much speeding on their road.
Right.
I said, I've heard about Swamp Road, about Davis Road. One twenty-five, one thirty-six, Route nine, I I get that feedback too, you know, I just don't know what the the answer is, if we're not doing any enforcement. We have the two signs and we move them around, when we get the squeaky wheel, so I think we should move that electronic sign over to one twenty-five.
Right.
Um, cuz there is that stretch of of houses, you know, that are all kind of packed together where that new house just went in.
Uh huh.
Um, but I don't know, like for the people who are going eighty miles an hour.
But this is further down towards the bridge than that new house is.
Like that new house is, the hill is what you're talking, like taking the hill really fast.
Yeah, the hill, between the bridge and Shiloh.
Yeah.
Yes, but it's probably there too, where you said.
Yeah, I'll, I'll slow down. Okay. Sorry.
Um.
That's my, that's all, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, thanks Deb, I mean, it's important to figure out where these hotspots are for people, I live on one twenty-five and it is a racetrack.
Yeah.
It's insane. I listen, I I watch people pass on line, it was a lot of time when I listened for accidents, like, cuz I'm just like, this is, someone's gonna get killed.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Did um, good man's.
On on the curve, you know.
Just park a police car somewhere without anyone in it.
Sometimes they do that.
Yeah.
I've offered my driveway to, yeah, I've offered them.
Yeah, is there an option to not hire a police officer, but just buy the vehicle?
Actually, I wonder if the people who are here for the uh junkyard hearing, if they have an extra cop car?
Yes, you have a police car, you just.
Yeah, I'm sure, we just moved around.
Um.
I asked them, everybody's.
It reminded me, do you have anything for?
For sheriff, I asked if I could have, I'll just park it.
See, I I just wanted to bring up the agricultural committee, community potluck.
Oh, yeah.
Because I would like to go to that, but I'm working at that time, so I'm not able to, and
Can you remember the date and time?
It is, I have it up, it's October twenty-fourth, Friday, six to seven thirty, at Eureka. So, it's a potluck. Um, I'm sharing it with some neighbors, I don't know what people are gonna have, but I think this is a great opportunity.
Really great.
So, just.
I know, any potluck I've been to, where some of the people who are there, I brought things, foods were really good.
There's one thing to say about people from Durham, we all can cook.
That's my biggest fear is it's a potluck, you have to buy it somewhere.
For your ribs.
Good point.
So anyway, that's, I just wanted to, and I, I also am very happy that you're gonna stay here.
Well, sorry, I'm sorry.
And for every little that you do. Yeah, mostly the agricultural community, so. That's it.
Um, alright, so you have nothing else, you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, Josh, what's the motion, take a second?
I'll second.
Alright, okay, any questions? Uh, all in favor? Any opposition, seeing none? Uh, upcoming meetings in town, so um, just flag now for people, November fourth is an election. Get out and get your voice heard, and we do have a vacancy on the select board right now, two candidates who are are running, so um, this is your chance to put the fifth, the fifth person up on the board. Uh, upcoming meetings, October twenty-eighth is the open space plan update from the conservation commission, which I'm really excited about. And then uh, select. And then uh select board communication discussion, which Rebecca has been, done a bunch of work in the background prep, to prepare for that.
I'm gonna, so just a note about that, I'm gonna send the document to everybody ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
So we can reference it, but it's not
So people can prepare, like wait for, yeah, okay.
Right. Yes.
Really appreciate that. All right, um
And it's up to you and to Jerry after that.
Perfect. Um, is there any need for an executive session?
We need to talk about the email we got yesterday.
Uh, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
That's actually
That's a staffing complaint, yeah. Um, all right, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second one, Josh? Any discussion, all right, all in favor? Any opposition, seeing none? Mm-hmm.
Right there. Of course, we need to bring something to the
Well, if you're going, I mean, it will probably
Yeah, I have to, I have to bring something to the pile.